Policy committee meeting. I guess I'll take a motion on the, uh, of the minutes of the October nineteenth, twenty twenty one.
Uh, so.
I'm sorry?
November tenth.
What did I say?
October eighth.
Oh, I'm looking at, uh, I'm looking at.
You're looking at the minutes.
I'm looking at the minutes. Thank you Brenda, thank you. Yes, November, uh, ten, twenty twenty one meeting.
So. Second.
We've got a motion to approve for minutes and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no, so that motion passes. So, on the agenda this evening, we have some policies and we have, um, I think we've all had time to go through them. Um, so, do we wanna, how do we wanna do this, like we did all this last time, uh, have, um?
Start with Ben's first, I think, since he'll have that.
Oh, okay, he's gotta get out of here.
He has his wellness policy. Wellness, I'll just go for the first.
He doesn't have to go.
Oh, yeah. It's a fun party.
I think he might wanna. Alright, so you're in the six, six hundreds, the six thousands?
Uh, normally it is the eight, eight pounds.
Eighty-five, ten.
Oh, eighty-five, ten.
Way, way on the bottom of the list.
Yeah, so the wellness policy, I think we've visited this in the past a little bit, um, this is a long one. Um, so this is a complete kind of, there were so many changes and Richard could probably speak to this a little bit and I could, but there's so many changes and they kinda started fresh with all of it. Um, there's a little bit more involved with this wellness policy because it's related to our federal program, the National School of Health Program. Um, so if you go through the policy right now, there's a lot of options that we'll be going through eventually. Uh, at this point with the policy committee and the board, uh, we don't plan to bring forward to the board this next month, um, because there could be more, um, pieces that are part of the process of kind of developing this policy. Uh, one of them is developing a wellness committee and bringing them together, that involves various stakeholders, communities, staff, all that stuff. Uh, but we wanted to present it to the policy committee just to review us, um, put it on your radar and then let you know the timeline for it.
Yeah, so I had, actually I had a question on this one, um, before we get started too much further. Um, so this, this eighty-five, ten, right? It looks like, it looks like a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of resources going into this. Um, is this something that, like, that is a federal requirement or, yeah?
Yes, yes, uh, my, if you, if you get one penny of federal money, which you do, you have to comply with the wellness policy, which is then monitored by, DPI and, uh, and monitored during the lunch audit that they, they come through and do that. And they'll run you through a checklist and then you'll get a letter of cor- of corrective action if you don't meet all of that stuff.
So, um, you see, so a lot of, sometimes I, I've seen in some of these requirements that you have to have a program, and sometimes that can mean having a, a program, basically, here it is, and, and, and doing minimal amount. Whereas other times, having a program means implementing and doing all these, all these things. And a lot of times when we, um, we look at, I mean, without the federal government involved, we would look at, let's do a cost benefit. You know, is it, is there a benefit to doing this and, and what is it and what is the cost? Um, are we allowed to do, is there like a range of?
Yes, and I'm not sure what you have here and what you've gone through, but Ben, have you selected options yet or have they seen all the options?
Uh, that's what we're gonna present it and there's all the options.
So you can see all the options there.
Yeah, so I think what's.
So most of what you're looking for is, are options that people don't take. So you can get it as skinny as possible, some of them, you don't have to take any options in that section, others say you have to have at least one. And one would be like, you've gotta give kids enough time to eat lunch.
Yeah, well, and that's, yeah, so obviously like comments and stuff, what are they already doing?
Right.
Um, who would, who would be the administrator, who would be looking, or administrators, who would be looking at, what, what things are here are, are good that we should be doing, what things we already are doing and what things doesn't really, there would be really no benefit.
Uh, kinda start with meat, uh, a lot of it, because a lot of it's related to the food service program.
That's what I was wondering.
Um, but there's also curriculum pieces in there too, so wrapping out with it, there's, um, wellness education, nutrition education, stuff like that, that, you know, going through it, if you read it, a lot of it we're already doing, like you said, Dave, like stuff that's, sometimes that's,
Yeah.
Um, that we have in place already, um, and a lot of it we're working within the guidelines that we have, um, you know, annually as we review the program.
There are probably like ten, ten to fifteen options just in physical education. By federal law, you have to have a physical education teacher involved in getting their feedback, and you'll usually pick one or maybe two of those physical education.
Sure.
Goals, so you're looking at something that's many pages long, that's gonna get condensed, but those are all the options that you have in order to fulfill the requirement.
Yeah, and I, I guess I'm trying to, wondering, wondering if it's, um, something we should, we should be doing, not really on paper so much as in practice? You know, like if there, um, and now maybe this is what you're gonna get into with this, like walking us through what we're doing already, what we're not doing, what you think we should be doing, what doesn't really matter? Um, or is that for the next?
Probably the next round, cause.
Next round, okay.
My preference too, uh, would probably just align it with what we're currently doing as much as possible. Um, you know, go through it and make sure those pieces that are required and are in there, um, and then trying to really make it, um, work for CEDR as much as possible.
Yeah, okay, and then, and then if there are things that we're not doing that are like good ideas, then you'll, I would assume, let us know that.
Yep.
And then if there are things in there that we're not doing that are not helpful, but would have, and we're not doing, it would have a, a cost in, um, either, you know, financial resources, time, um, education, that, you know, curricul- you know, that time out of the classroom, whatever it would be, I don't know what it would be. Could you, will you let us know, kinda mark that stuff too, and maybe we can figure out a way to work that to make it fit for us?
Yep, yeah, I, I don't imagine a lot of changes from what we're currently doing.
Okay, good.
It's just to match the requirement of having this policy in place, having a review process, um, that's probably the biggest, um, part of this, this process and, um, but beyond that, in terms of practice, we have pretty much what we have been doing in place for a while.
Okay.
The most recent audit we had, uh, was just a couple of years ago, and, um, there was no findings from this, our policy in practice for what we do. So, uh, we have a good, um, you know, system in place, it's just making sure we go through the process, the requirement of having the policy, making the requirements there, and then having the, uh, meeting the requirement for the review of the policy, uh, which is both annual and there's a three-year requirement of kind of what we need to do, so, just going through those pieces.
You mean the committee, was it a requirement or was it an option?
Uh, committee is a requirement, yeah.
If that is, but the options.
It's not every year, but every three.
No, the committee is a, is an option. The, the rule is that you need to get feedback, so if Ben wants to have individual meetings with all these different groups of stakeholders, or, you know, he can do that, it's just ninety-five percent of districts use a committee because it's the most efficient. You have a meeting, everybody comes, you talk about it, you finish up your work, you go.
Yeah.
That's just, it's just for efficiency.
Cause I thought it said in there, yeah, like it wasn't a requirement, but it makes sense in terms of efficiency.
Yeah, it's to get feedback.
But as, but as Ben said, it is a requirement that there has to be an annual report on how you're doing on your policy and your goals. And so if you get to the point and it's like boom, 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 green lights all the way, then you might say, you know, is there something we could push ourselves next year on? Is there one thing we can do a little more on? But there's no reason to select everything and, and have yourself showing up as not doing well, when you're trying to, when you're trying to do the moon and nobody's doing the moon, so we just do it a sensible way, sensible way.
And this is a revision, I mean, it was here before, just a new version, it's like new, so just new pieces in there.
The twenty twenty-two version.
The version, yep, yeah, yeah.
See, it's crossed off before.
I know, I didn't really think in.
A lot of it is going to be this, translate the same.
Yeah.
It's just that as part of their monitoring checklist, DPI has things in a different order and a different combination, and it just messes things up, so it's just like, okay, let's.
They did that in a couple of other policies, so, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have these long policies, we have all those changes, sometimes it's just cleaner.
For you.
Yep.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But there aren't a lot of similarities between the two.
Okay.
If you lay the two next, you'll end up saying, oh, we chose that, let's choose that again, we did that, let's choose that again.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just in a different place.
Yeah.
Monitors don't like it when it doesn't go along with their checklist, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Remember we need to have it completed by?
Uh, we should have a review done this year, um, like Richard said, we should have a.
School year?
Uh, probably by the end of June, um, that was my plan, is to get the, go, go through that feedback process sometime this spring.
Okay.
And the committee is the most efficient feedback?
Um, yeah, I did reach, you know, working with DPI, there are, they did recommend other options, you know, you can do surveys and stuff like that to, uh, keep feedback, feedback on it. Um, and so we'll review those and see what works the best.
Yeah, cause I can't imagine, I mean, that's gonna suck up someone's time. You have the survey, if it's a survey that, you know, it's done in a way that it can't be, you know, it can't be multiple, you know, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's giving you feedback, so we'll take the feedback and involve it with this, the review of it, um, but we want feedback, so it doesn't mean they're gonna be able to, you know, strike things out, it's ultimately up to the board.
Right, no, I get it, yeah, but you want it to be, you want it to be helpful and useful, but not a, and not a, uh, burdensome exercise that doesn't do anything for us, right?
Yeah, and like I said, I mean, our program is very successful, and so there's no concerns, uh, it's mostly aligned with what we currently have. In fact, when we had our last audit, they do it every three years typically, but they said they were comfortable enough with where we're at, but they're gonna come back every five years, so.
Oh.
Um, so we're in a pretty good position there, it's just making sure we're complying with this piece.
Cool.
And by they auditing?
DPI.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're the agency for the federal.
Yeah, right.
Um, just remember, Ben, to, to save all the documentation of the feedback that you get. Because, because you need to have, to show, to be able to prove that you actually consulted and got feedback, whatever method you use. So like we'll go into a file and just kinda save it, cause if anybody wants to say.
Audit's the audit.
Right. A lot of times people get surveys and stuff and then pitch them or whatever else, and if you're gonna have a committee, keep notes on the committee meetings. They're not publishing, you know, publishing, you know, but have, have your notes and save those for your documentation, so you have a trail.
So, Richard, is that a committee that would be, um, subject to the open meetings law?
Well, you know, I was just, I, I, I heard myself say that and I was thinking, um.
I was thinking too.
And I was thinking, there would be no reason not to open it up to the public, I mean, the public has a right to know. It's a policy, it's gonna be a recommendation coming to the board, so it's really, the board is kind of assigning.
Charged, ran with this assignment to bring back, so we're thinking, subject to open meetings law.
It would be.
I can't imagine we'd be touching on any confidential information.
No, not at all, and it's not, it's just a matter of, you know, it's supposed to be, the public is one of the stakeholders too, and it's good. Let people see what it all, what, what's all there and what your options are and, um.
It just means posting like we would.
Yeah.
Yes. And you'll likely get an audience like this.
Yep. One more.
Yeah. Is that it for you?
Yep.
So we pull this, we don't pull it to the full board, so you'll bring it back.
Yep.
Maybe I'll be here then.
Yeah.
Eating Doritos and sleeping in a.
Yeah, yeah.
Y'all in a soda.
Yeah, cause all junk food.
Or better yet, you could send someone to record it, maybe they could watch it later.
Yeah, yeah, I sure could, sure could. Alright.
Then you're free going, I guess.
Thanks, Ben.
There was eighty-four feedback.
So then we thought we'd jump into fifty-seven twenty-two, which is another one that's, um, full of options and.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 won't be going to the board in real, but.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
Good night.
Bye, Ben.
Richard, you wanna introduce this one? Yeah, walk us through this, because it came with the.
Yeah, that's one.
The two.
I don't get it.
Came with the two.
Yeah.
So about ten years ago, this is a, this is a big issue in terms of when you have school-sponsored speech, okay? Student newspapers, yearbooks, productions, blogs, you know, videos, you name it, they're doing everything. So for years, this, I mean, there are Supreme Court cases, you may remember from law school, that go back into the seventies about, and still in, in effect today, about school-sponsored speech. I can remember when I was in high school, there was a big issue in the, in the newspaper and it, whatever else. So it's, it's, it's always been an issue about student speech, which we really call school-sponsored speech. And the question is, how open is it, how self-regulated is it, and how much is there, uh, district supervision of that? And are you creating really an unlimited public forum where anybody can come in and your school newspaper takes letters to the editor from all over town talking about whatever they want to? Or whether it's really something that is more tightly controlled and it's, it's limited? So, the last time this was kind of brought out was about ten years ago, and the number of court cases that we've had, and because of the proliferation now of all the digital electronic stuff, we're, we're in a whole different place. So, um, the folks said, you know, it is time to not only revisit this, but this is one of those kind of replacements, that are not done very often, but it's best to start from scratch rather than patch, you know, what you have now. Now, once again, if you took this and you laid it next to the, next to what you have, it would be like having a, um, a Ford Explorer for, from two thousand twelve and Ford Explorer from, you know, twenty twenty-two. It's gonna look similar, but it's gonna have a lot of different features and, and pieces in it, so it's gonna be recognizable, but not, so it's better to just start from scratch. Most of this template, three quarters of it, will be gone because there are four options. So once you start peeling off the three that you don't want, three quarters of it will be gone and you'll be left. And the, the, the major question on this is, there is a continuum of, um, how much supervision you're going to give to, to student speech. And on one end is, the kids own it, whatever they say, fine, let her rip. Um, you know, that's an option, and that's certainly one that's used, for example, in colleges and universities. I mean, those papers just, and those publications just do whatever they're going to do. The other end of the extreme is, is the district reserves the right for prior review before anything goes out. Now, the people on the other end of the spectrum would call that censorship, the people on, who look at that saying that's responsible, that, that's responsible supervision for, for people who are fourteen, fifteen, and, or maybe even ten, eleven years old, that you're actually going to give them that, that, uh, supervision that they need. So there are gradations between all of those, and you need to look at it and determine what you're going to do. I will say that almost all, not all, but almost all districts choose, uh, you know, the first option, which is the most restrictive, which saying, we wanna review what you're doing because that's why you're in school, for us to review things, look at it, we're not there to censor content, but we wanna make sure that when it goes out with the schools, as a school-sponsored whatever, that it actually, uh, meets certain criteria. So, so it has to be, you know, you want it to be viewpoint neutral, obviously, you're not telling kids be in favor of this or against that, but you want it to be done responsibly, use language that's appropriate, you know, there's all, there's all the, the normal tests that you give.
So would we, I understand there's a lot more mediums right now, but would we have gone, or would the policy committee or the district have gone through this process the last time the policy was adopted? You know what I mean, to go through those different levels?
Um, I don't think the policy committee did, I think it was more of the group that was drafting the policy. And as you see and hear, it is recommended that, once again, this be a broader stakeholder group. The issue here is not so much what policy you choose, what, what level you're choosing. You have the right to, to choose any of those, anywhere on that spectrum. The reason, uh, school districts oftentimes get, find themselves in trouble, and I have a few that have even found themselves in court, is because there's a disconnect between what the policy is and what they're enforcing, and it's easy to see. A decision is made here, then it's communicated to the principal, who then has to communicate, we'll just say, to the newspaper advisor, who then has to communicate it to the students. Next year, have any of those people changed? Have they remembered all that? And what, all, year after year after year, becomes one of those things where you need to make sure that this, the superintendent is talking to the principals, who are then talking to the advisors. And, and what happens is over time, as advisors change, principals change, the standards start to, people are just using their own as opposed to using the policy. And then there's a disconnect between what the policy says and what the practice is. And then when that comes about, what happens oftentimes is the district says, whoa, that's not in accordance with our policy, and now we have a problem. Because the district was not policing its policy, students went out, now, now what, now what's what? Because officially it's this, but the practice has been that, and when you get that disconnect, that becomes a real, a real problem to try and square things away again.
Are there some guidelines that, that would be published with the, with, with the policy, you know, with the administration have?
I mean, there are administrative guidelines, but they can't do those until.
Right, no, I'm saying, that might help, that might help if they, rather than, you know, the murky policy that no one dusts off, you know, every, except every five years, to have the, the guidelines available, right? Yes, people might be already.
Or like in the handbook?
Yeah, that's right.
What was, you guys recently did a review of policies, I don't know which ones were in there, how they were reviewed, but yeah, this is, I feel like, who owns this? Like who's owning this at the committee level to understand like what we're doing now, so that it cross-references appropriately, it's right, we're gonna bring this, you're gonna bring this back.
So if you click on, Richard, we need to walk us through this, um, Brenda, the toolkit there?
Yeah.
And if you go to the toolkit, the, the only, Richard, I was just laying out the, the landscape.
Yeah.
If you get down to the middle of the doctor's recommendation, recommended procedures for development and adoption of replacement policy.
Yeah.
And it gives you, it gives us.
Yeah.
Keep going down.
What was that?
Uh, no, no, keep going, right there, recommended procedures.
So in the middle of that document, there's probably, I don't know, one of the A, B, C, E, D, it might be a little over there, but G, there, uh, F, the steps that we would go through and, um, to, to address, to address this.
The recommended procedures on the other page?
Um, four.
Four, alright. I had to print this out, cause I'm an old guy, I can't.
You went people.
Um, they're not, the pages aren't numbered, so let's see, option. The, option B, hold on.
Yeah, it's a special committee, yeah.
Is it after the three?
It's giving the same recommendation.
Oh, you're in the toolkit.
The toolkit.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was in the draft.
Oh, yeah, page four of the toolkit, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Who's actually mentioned it?
So, it's, it's, it all urges its clients to survive all issues stakeholders, Board of Education should take an active role as a committee of the whole, potentially, in the consideration, assessment of its options when adopting replacement policy. It's not recommended that the work on this issue be solely delegated to the board's policy committee, so they're, they're suggesting that this committee kick it back and create a committee, which probably would be subject to the open meetings law.
Yes.
And, um, work through this and, uh.
Yeah, that last paragraph talks about too, like superintendent should be charged with carefully investigating, delineating the district's current practices. Yep, and that obviously would be part of what we're doing now to make sure we're aligned.
And again, you wanna document what you've done, because the courts like to understand what the intent was. Because again, as you discuss things, and if an issue comes up, it's really, and something gets contested, the intent is, is important, as well as the process, that this was really, so those things are important.
How sweeping are the changes, they, they, they must be pretty, pretty, no?
Well, I think when you compare them, they're not as sweeping as they might be, but I think a lot of people just forgot about the things, I mean, how many classroom teachers blog? How many cla- and that's what happens.
Right.
It's much more than the school paper now, and that's the issue, is it's very expansive.
So the involvement of the.
Well, it's like clubs, sports, right, like it's anything.
We used to tell, we used to tell, uh, you know, people, this is mostly a high school issue, you know, student newspaper, you know, classroom productions, maybe a talent show. Your first grade teacher is probably writing newsletters to the parents and, and, and showing off student work and so forth, and all of a sudden it's like, oh my gosh, okay, this is, this is really, you know, all pervasive now.
So the, the stakeholder feedback would be kind of to figure out what's all out there.
That's what you really need to layer out.
That's the scope, and then, um, and then also to create awareness, I would imagine.
It, it's usually the case that districts underestimate by a lot of how much is actually out there.
Yeah.
You see that?
Because you just, people are just thinking traditional forms, and they don't think about all those other things that are actually just part of the landscape now, it's, it's just typical.
And it gets into productions, and the production could be, um, school play.
Uh-huh. It could be school play, it is not anything like a, you know, it, it's not about, um, graphic design, because the whole idea of this is, this is where there's feedback concerned, not, not student work. So remember what this is all about, so you have a Facebook page, do you allow comments or not? Okay, you have a blog, do you allow comments? When you send things home for parents, can they respond back to it? That's what they're looking at, if you're just going to put artwork on the wall, unless you put up a, a, some paint there for people to add to it, there's, there is no feedback. So that's a, that's a whole different law. This is all about creating a forum, there's no forum when it's just a static piece of artwork, does that make sense?
But do you come up then with different levels, depending on whether it's a teacher writing a letter to her classroom versus a graduation speech that a student is getting up and speaking in front of?
Or like the school newspaper, that's a good point, yeah, there's different mediums, there's different.
Yes, and that's why you have to go through the, that's why you have to go through the process, and that's why it's not just a bang, bang, bang thing like it used to be, because there was such a limited number that you could easily corral everything and say, that's what we do.
I think to your point, it sounds large in terms of scope, but it might all be addressed similarly in terms of restraining, or just like review or guidelines. Like, they might all have the same sort of checks, that could be simplified, but it's just a scope issue, you know.
If you look at the options, um, like option two, I, I believe is let, let you actually identify which ones you're going to.
Right.
Declare. So option one is you just, it's a blanket statement covering everything, option two says, okay, we know, we're gonna tease this out a little bit more, and allow a little bit more leeway for these and a little bit less leeway for those. So that's what you really need to, as a community, figure out, kinda where do you want things to go? And this gets all wrapped up in the idea of, of student expression.
So, but it does say for item two, like, you don't get the feedback before you get the replacement policy determined? I thought that was, I thought it was, I thought it was the other way around, like, we're gonna understand what we're doing, then understand the policy, right? Mine is three.
No, you're correct, it makes reference to some prior surveys that perhaps we're knowing that we should consult.
You really need to figure out what's going on in the district.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you'll make, you'll make a pol- you'll make policy decisions that are not based upon the facts on the ground.
Right.
And that's what you're trying to do.
In reality, yeah.
And you'll discover things after.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, it, it's pretty extensive, it gets into, you know, uh, not limited to, you know, banners, flyers, posters, pamphlets, notices, newspapers, uh, playbills, yearbooks, literary journals, books, T-shirts, you know, I mean, just. You think about our production, you know, what's going on in our innovation center.
Oh, yeah.
Students are producing all kinds of things, products for sale, and so.
But maybe that, some of that might be more, more along lines of individual art, not so much the, um, is that wouldn't be swept into this?
Like if we're producing and selling it at our store, that's what everybody's doing, and it's kind of, those things would be, so it's, it's, it's broad.
And, and you can see where it's so much broader than it used to be.
Correct.
And that's, that's what's happened, there have been, they've tried to apply the old policy to new challenges that have come along, and the courts keep ruling, and the courts keep ruling, and finally just say, you know what, we just need a, a, a broader policy to take into account all these things, because the courts are having trouble making distinctions, and the last thing you really want is the court to be deciding what you could be deciding.
After the fact.
Yeah.
So what, what is the, um, the recommended next step on this?
The, the recommended next step is that you would have this ready, approved in part of your student handbook or faculty handbook and everything, before the next school year begins. So, that's, that's where you begin counting backwards and saying, okay, what's our, what's our reason?
But that doesn't mean.
I said that's the best case scenario.
I think the summer, July first, kind of project.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it seems, it seems appropriate to have something in place for next year, whether it makes the handbook or not, is it, so, right, you were gonna always set something up, and it makes sense that.
No, I don't know what you, yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking, Dave, that we, I have not delved into this deeply, and my thinking is that we delve into it, come up with kind of a, what are the next action steps?
Yeah.
Bring it back to the policy base, that this makes sense, you endorse that, and then we run with it.
Yeah.
And then just give an update to the policy. And then just give an update to the policy committee as we move through.
Yeah. Have, have they?
Target deadline.
Have any districts done like a, kind of a tiered approach, where they, they might, um, they might watch, you know, like younger kids or older kids, I don't know, more carefully than others, or different s- grade levels, or anything like that? Or not really?
Well, you're just really talking about age appropriateness, age appropriate supervision is I think what you're getting at.
Yeah.
Of course, you're probably, you know, you're probab-, and that's, that's what you're going to be looking at.
Yeah, okay, I got it, yeah.
As students grow, you're giving them more options to grow, and that just makes more sense, I'll give you that anyway.
Right, good options, yes, that's, that's. Yeah, okay, yeah.
What, and can you define it more, instead of listing every specific, specific thing as categories? Because I just feel once you start listing specifics, you're gonna miss, you know, there's gonna, something new is gonna come up, that it's like, wow, we didn't have that.
And you have to define every single thing, so it's more of a, yeah, I agree.
Well, see, it was only recently, as, as you remember, that we started removing things like, examples of, like BlackBerries and MySpace from the policy. Right, so as you get too specific, as you get.
Oh, yeah, that's true, we did. BlackBerry, I think, was the same.
Yeah, and then the last, last update, we took out microfilm, so, from student records. So what happens is if you get too specific, you're right, that it's, it's an issue, you just wanna think about broader categories, because, again, as new things come up. So the next step.
Scoop them. The next step would be then, that, that you, you, the administration brings something back to the next board meeting?
Kind of action steps, that I'm thinking, and you say, okay, this process looks good.
Yeah.
And then you give us the approval, and we'll start working the process, and we just update the board as they work through it.
Sounds good.
With the goal of getting something, I agree, I think something should be done prior to the start of the school year, it's not gonna make the handbook, but we can certainly still make certain it's in the.
Oh, I don't know, I don't know how, well, how your handbooks work, you know, I work with so many schools in summer, you know, there are different ways, so if you have earlier deadlines.
Yeah, that's a major.
July deadlines.
Well, then you're not gonna make it, and again, some are.
Even sooner than that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sensible.
So then, do we, do we need to do anything on that? We don't need to do anything on that.
The administra-, we, administration just wanted some guidance, and if you're okay with how it was, what I shared in the report.
Yeah, and just whatever you, you decide, um, is the approach we should take, you know, if it's, maybe, maybe, uh, Ernest, I'm assuming, you know, you know, reasons if it's, you wanna go with the free for all versus the.
Oh, free for all.
Most restrictive.
Yeah, no, I got it.
Between, yeah, cuz, yeah.
Okay.
It, it's similar, it's, it's, it's probably gonna follow similar steps to the numbers, that's why we put the two of these on the front end of this meeting, because it's, the, 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 the method is, is very similar. All right, could I be in the room?
And those are the only two policies that are light back. That we, are requiring replacements, that are really, uh, require a lot of feedback and such. Everything else is just pretty automatic, routine.
All right.
That's nine, seven, two, two.
And eighty-five, ten, bold table, the community work.
All right. Any others out of sequence?
Nope.
That's it, that was it. All right, and then, let's go, uh, Brenda, you wanna read us like last time? That should've worked pretty well.
Uh, definitions. Zero one hundred.
You're gonna wanna take that draft in the, of the school official.
Yeah. I just left it in there for them, yeah. So I think what we do is usually go down, you guys see, the first one, you have maybe a question or, uh.
Yeah. Anyone have anything, yeah, anyone have anything on the, the zeros, zeros?
They had, well, like, I don't know if shall is appropriate, it might be appropriate under board. The board, school board shall take actions that is within the comprehensive meaning of the terms, duties, and powers, prior to that such action is obligated by state, federal. I feel like that, where are you, under board, I feel like it should be a shall, but I just wanted to call it out.
Which one?
Um, the definition of board. Should it be may, or should it be shall? So the board will take action, that is a then?
You can only take action that's, that's lawful, under the statutes, that's what it means.
Right, so that's right, so we will take lawful, yeah, okay, cool, I just wanted to talk that out.
You will take action, yes. Yep.
Um, school district, school official. Oh, do we wanna have employed by the district as an administrator, supervisor, teacher? For school official definition?
That's what we've been doing.
That's what we've been doing.
Yeah.
Not employed by the board, right? Right, that's what we do, district.
That's what we've been doing, right?
Okay, and then superintendent.
The glass is gone.
Um, I had one for superintendent, too. Oh, I was, I, I was curious why they changed it for superintendent definition, from the term superintendent implies delegation to may imply.
So this is one of these.
And not will or shall.
Yeah, this is one of these things where, part of this is, it, this is a very practitioner oriented process, and this is feedback from the field.
Yeah.
And there were, there was a question that came up from a district where, based upon the old language, it made it sound, they said, it sounded like every time it says district administrator, that means all the district administrator does is sits back in their lazy boy chair and point to other people, implies, not may imply. So it made it sound like the definition, the district administrator doesn't do anything him or herself. The district administrator always delegates to someone else, if it implies, that means it always implies. So I never saw it that way, but, so, somebody, that someone had a problem, they say, well, I guess you could read it that way, and the whole idea of definitions is to try and be clear.
Yeah, okay, interesting.
Yeah.
So when the capitalization of the term superintendent may imply.
It may imply, so superintendent may do it themselves, and they may delegate it.
Yeah.
Yeah. The other way it sounded like they would, it implies, always.
Oh. Interesting, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
So you found that one, you're sitting there, I did.
I don't know, it's like, why was that so, yeah, I mean, I wanted to know, like, someone was really thinking about that one.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, okay, and then number four, I think school officials just on their choice. Cause it's out of, it's like in alphabetical order, and then under superintendent, out of alphabetical.
You're right.
I'll do that.
So it should be up to why is it down there?
I don't know.
Take the one out underneath superintendent.
I felt like they were, someone was really messing with me, though, because I was right after the may implies part, and I'm like, okay, what am I missing, people, like?
Oh, yeah, just got.
Good catch. Yeah. And that's all I have for zero one hundred. Uh, one forty-two, one. I think I have some number one forty-two point five?
Did you, which school official did you delete?
The second one, right?
The second one.
Is it a different definition?
There are different, so, or is, is the second one the one that should be removed, which you're in there, because the first one does have all the edits in it, that's what I was.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking, because the first one edited.
The first one is the one that's correct.
Yeah, yeah, and then it just.
Sure, I can know.
Yeah.
Right, I'll, I'll take that out.
Okay. I'm patient, but I haven't really cropped that up for you right now.
Out.
I don't know, back and look at that, I can't, I don't know.
How many times you wanna look in policy, right?
There's something about comm devices.
Just looking out for you.
About what?
I thought it was in one forty-two about communication devices.
Or the forty-two, one?
Uh, actually, I mean, I was on the paper copy, or not the, the soft.
Point one or point five, first one?
Uh, I don't know, I just have one forty-two in my notes, sorry, hold on one second.
About what was the term you?
It was the communication device. I swear it was in here, hold on, let me find it. I don't know, I don't know.
Exceeded one, what was wrong?
Just really statutory ways of filling board positions.
Yeah, I don't know, I'll come back to it later, I don't know, I have it in my notes, so. And I, I called it out, because I remember we already talked about this in like another policy meeting in the last year, and I saw it, and I wanted to make sure it was the same as what we decided. So, you know, sometimes they put things in different places, and we don't always see it until the policy comes back up next time.
It's probably one forty-four point five.
Maybe that's, maybe I just tagged it, that's where it is, okay.
That's where it is.
Yep, I just tagged it, okay, one forty-four point five. Yeah, board member behavior. So we had, um, I remember talking about it, because I was pregnant at the time, and this is where there was a policy added, like a year ago, where they said, no communication devices by board members, and we were like, and we felt more comfortable not having that in there.
Right.
Because, yeah, we feel like we can make that call, and we're not gonna sit there on our phones, and if we wanna have our access to our phone emergencies, yeah.
It was an option, it was an option.
So it's, it feels like it stuck back in, and I thought we wanted to remove it, so.
Did it where?
Did it not?
The board member use of commu-, electronic communication device.
Yeah.
Where, that, right, there, where the, the question is.
Yeah, right there. Um. What's it say? That the board member may lead to the perception that we're not paying attention, receiving information, blah, 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 blah. What did we do last time?
I think you changed the language.
I think we did too.
There was one that just said flat out, you can't.
Don't use it.
This just is giving you guidelines, how to use it, and how it would be perceived, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Because we said, this is, this hasn't changed, right?
So we're good with this, right? No, no, there wasn't a change, but you know how sometimes you'll have it in a policy, and it won't be this, it won't be the same as how we changed it before, because we don't always call out when it's in every single policy, right? Cause it's one at a time, so I wanted to just call that out and make sure that it was consistent, which I think it is, because everyone said no, and this is just like, hey, it could look this way, but.
Because yours talks about board member use, and, and the other one was, you know, prohibited use.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
Okay, and that was the thing, so this is your language.
So this must be our language, yeah.
You adjusted this for your community, yeah.
Cool, okay, yeah. Good, Marie, thanks. And then I'm going to one sixty-six. Anything else before one sixty-six?
No, I don't have any.
I had a question just on one fifty-two, it said, election of officers shall be, be by a majority vote of existing board members present at a board meeting. What is considered present? Is that just, it can be via a call, I mean, it's not physically present?
It's physically now, I think.
I, well, no, I would have to, can you, sorry to do this, go back to definitions, oh, one hundred.
It could be, it could be virtual.
Yeah, it could be virtual.
And go all the way to the bottom on voting. We have a definition of voting, and you can choose it, and you say a vote at meeting, the law requires be present, a board member is present at a meeting if attending by phone or other manner of remote access.
Oh, yeah.
So long as it's compliant with state law. So you, you took the option of saying that you could, you could call in or whatever else, as long as you're compliant.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to.
You cannot give a proxy, so you can't write it out and say, vote for so and so, and so and so is voting for me. That's not legal by, by law.
Good catch.
So oh, one six six, then which would be on that?
This was a district change, the agenda policy? Yeah. Um, we were stating that, that deleted language on every board meeting, including special board meetings, so like any board meeting where you would. Yeah. Call it to order and then go into executive session, we had to put that on the top of each agenda, so we're like, it just didn't make sense, it caused a lot of confusion, people were saying, well, why does it say that it may be allowed as indicated on the agenda? And then in the agenda, you would have to say, it's not being allowed at this meeting. Yeah. So we asked Richard if we could take that out, and he said, sure. All right.
There's no legal reason you have to, no legal requirement to have that.
Cool, okay. We'll still, still keep it on like the regular. Yeah. Agendas, I think, why not? We'll see. All right, then, I didn't have anything for the new policy criminal history record check, self-reporting requirement? I seen, yeah, before.
I, I did. Just, um, my question was, okay, let me, okay, so you have, you know, you have established the necessary procedures for obtaining any criminal history on the applicant? I mean, does that have to be documented somewhere? On how you do that, I just know, we do, I, for work, have to do some criminal histories, and it's amazing how you can go to C cap, and it'll be, have some stuff, but then you'll do a background check, and it won't have any, it's just, it's, it can be, depending on which mode you're using, it can really come up with a different background. And I don't know if that needs to be defined at all.
It's up, it's up to you, as a district, how you're going to, what procedure you're going to use. Uh, for example, you're using Raptor now for everybody coming into the building, and Raptor tells you some things, but not other things. Um, and I think you can change it to tell different things if you want to, you can up the ante, as it were. So you, you've chosen that, not every district does that, that's something that you've chosen, the same with, with background checks, in terms of that.
Okay.
You just have to be consistent, you can't say, I'm gonna do it this way on this applicant, and this way on that applicant. So part of the guidelines is that there isn't, there is a district process, this is the way we do it for all professional staff, this is the way we do it for all support staff.
And so that's, cause that's right, when we came up, I remember when we did our initial, um, with the screening company we were using, we had to go through, okay, go back seven years for this, go back five years, so you've done all of that for the screening service you're using? Is it like documented that way? Cause we have it documented, it's what we screen on.
Like in a handbook, or?
Just a process, like with Conrad. Conrad would treat all teacher applicants the same way. And then he would treat, because you can't treat them differently.
Right.
And then all support staff members could be treated the same, you know, the same way. Or you could even divide them further into custodial staff, and, you know, you just have to treat all applicants in that pool the same.
And that's why they have it for, they have this a couple times, administration.
Well, that's why you're seeing it three times, because there are really three HR sections, but back to the, to the question is, there's no legal requirement about which way to use? That's up to the district to choose, that's in the administrative guidelines on how you want to do it, and then you just have to do it consistently to be fair. Does that, did that answer your question?
So you're kinda asking, like, should it be documented in the policy if we, what our guidelines are?
Yeah, or is it documented somewhere, that someone would ask?
Somewhere.
Yeah.
Probably under Conrad.
Conrad would have it.
Well, yeah, I'm looking for it, cause I know we, we made a, a change, um, um, cause we were paying for a service. And we weren't giving much more than just the public service that you can use. And so to save the dollars, we just continued to use the public service, and if something surfaced there, then we would go down to the next level and pay for an integrated check.
And then if you're paying for service, you have to be careful that you're not paying for credit serf, services, cause a lot of them go into credit, which you can't use for your employment, and so that's a whole different piece.
Cause that's what we found, we were paying for a service, and we were finding more stuff just going through the public database versus paying for this, that you're not finding anything.
So we made that change, I'm looking for it, or I know we provided it in a, a pitch before.
It would be, uh, um, probably in, under thirty-four twenty-one in the, in the guideline.
And while you're looking it up, so that's why now superintendent, whether crossing off district administrator everywhere and just putting superintendent, because they redefined it, or did we do that?
You use, you use the term superintendent.
Do we?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Superintendent and district administrator mean the same thing.
Yeah.
It's like school board and board of education.
I don't know why that.
They're interchangeable.
Okay, yeah, maybe I just got used to it, I overlooked it, but, okay.
It's just cause you think Todd is a super guy.
He's in charge of everything.
So there are two things that can happen, one is it could actually be in your administrative guidelines, which Todd is looking up right now, or two, it could be in your HR office manual. And we don't put every, like, we don't have the athletic code, or the co-curricular code, whatever your activities go, whatever you call it here, in the guideline, but you, anybody who asks for it, here it is. Um, so we don't, so again, I'm not sure, some districts put it into their actual guideline as to what they're gonna go use, some say, we just keep it in our HR office manual, or our business office manual, our hiring manual, our employment manual, whatever you, they call it.
I'm looking for it, I, I, I can't find the update, I didn't look in, I didn't look in the, the guidelines and see if it's there.
If you.
I do know when, when the candidates do sign off, there, it's noted what type we're gonna do on the candidate.
It's, yeah.
I'll look at thirty-four twenty-one, is there a guideline for thirty-four twenty-one?
Yeah.
No.
Is there a guideline for forty-four twenty-one?
So I'm not seeing.
Oh, I'm sorry, thirty-one twenty-one? Or forty-one twenty-one? Either, and I know that Conrad likes to, has kind of his employment manual there, that is, it's a public. And I know that Conrad likes to, has kind of his employment manual there, that is, it's a public record, how are you vetting, how are you vetting people? And again, you don't, you'd put something that thick online for whatever reason, like I said, if someone's interested. It's, it's there for them to, to see what, what process you're using.
Okay.
It's like your whole employment, teacher application for employment is not listed in this board ducks, it's part of the HR employment hiring manual.
And then there's a separate, I think there's a separate guideline, um. Database as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So that would, you might find more of the details in that.
So there's policy forty-one twenty-one, is that, did you reference that, that's criminal history record check, right?
For support staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's, yeah, it's the same policy.
Thirty-one twenty-one.
Different groups.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is, is that. It's very important for board policy to have this, but to get into the, the, the management aspect of it. That's what the guidelines, which are oftentimes places called procedures, policies and procedures, we call them guidelines. And, and the thing is that you can or cannot put them in there, they're gonna be somewhere in the district. Like I said, the athletic code is not in there, but we, you, you can, you have it, it's a public record, anybody can see it, same, same with this, so. It's, every district does it a little differently as to how much procedure they wanna, they wanna just put into this manual and how much is more convenient for them to keep separated out. And I think in Conrad's case, he has a, he has all the procedures, but I think he keeps them. He didn't spend the time to put them all in here.
So, or we can put it, like, I could put something in the update regarding that.
About what procedures being used, the board members know.
See it on Friday.
That sounds good.
Alright, cool, fourteen sixty. What do you think?
No.
Nope, okay, uh, twenty-two ten?
I just saw the part, well, obviously just the part of the Holocaust teachings, I'm assuming we're doing that already, but.
State statute starting September first.
It is, okay.
Isn't it coming up?
Yeah, I know, I know they're teaching it in high school, but I don't know about five to eight.
Um, I could not, I know we, we, we touch on it, but Alan is in the process, not, but, but Alan's in the process of revamping the social studies. Resources and wanting to make certain that they are delivering that instruction on it.
Yeah.
And we're complying, I think it's, it's, it's coming to the curriculum committee of the board next month, I believe.
Oh, okay, and so he's obviously auditing at the five to eight too?
Yes.
Okay.
It was, and, and again, it was common, and it still is common in, in districts, many districts, that eighth grade, um, English class, literacy class, you can die or you're in frame.
Yeah.
That, that's pretty, it's been pretty standard, but, and again, that's where it gets touched on, so. You'll find it in different parts of the curriculum.
Yeah.
Each district decides for themselves.
Yeah. Okay, I know either.
I just have a question, I'm trying to move here, so sorry.
Nope.
So when, and this, so when it's for grades nine to twelve, how do you, Alan just makes sure that some campus students take classes all over the board? That they're gonna hit it at some point?
Yes, either through their, yeah, so it will be actually in curriculum, so it will be in, uh, build your own curriculum, um, or as we're now migrating or in Canvas. So it will be stated explicitly that they're teaching it.
But that's to, to ensure that whatever hack you take through, that you will touch it.
All ninth grade English, correct, yeah. You'll touch it.
You will touch it, it's a requirement, yes.
So it'll be somewhere in a core class or a course.
That every student would.
Yeah.
Get it at some point.
Yeah.
Fifth through eighth grade, pretty easy, when you get to high school, that's your place, when you get to, so you have to be sure that they in, in either a required class in social studies, for example.
Right.
Or it's touched on, um, in the elective that they, pathway that they choose.
It might be touched more than once too, if they do go out, I would think multiple places, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. It's, it's touched on AP classes, yeah.
Yeah, it's touched on once, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so you don't wanna create a checkerboard where someone could actually, um, would go through our system and not touch on that, that's what you're gonna have to worry about. So we wanna guaranteed exposure to that.
Thank you.
Twenty-two sixty-six.
That's just a minor change, right?
Yeah, the major change did not affect what you're doing, and so all you're seeing left are the minor changes. Is.
Twenty-four fourteen.
On twenty-four fourteen, I, I was looking at that earlier and I, I, it looked to me like there were some revisions here that didn't comply with Wisconsin statute.
Yeah, with.
So then I, I, I under, I'd like to table this one, cause I understand that, um, Neola's in the process of redoing it anyway, and it's gonna be coming back in a couple weeks or months or whatever.
Yeah, it's going to be coming back this year, uh, because again, it, there was some, um, confusing language in it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say it, it's not that it doesn't comply, but it could easily be misinterpreted, and so there, that came up and they're gonna rewrite it and re.
Sure. Okay.
Come back, so the safe thing to do would be just table it and just wait till it's done, reissued.
Man.
Makes sense.
Until next update, four-ish. Yeah, I mean, this one. That's interesting.
Well, the statute was rewritten, and as I say, part of it is trying to make sure that people do not. Misinterpret or misunderstand, or there's confusion over what the policy really means, and it turns out as, I was at a meeting last week, the Neola meeting, and this one was. Under the microscope saying, we're having some issues with this one, and sometimes, you know that picture of, can you see the, this lady or that lady?
Yeah.
That trick picture?
Yeah.
And sometimes you look at policy and somebody says, what do you mean, it says this, and then someone else will say, oh no, I have all these districts that are saying it means that, and go, well, I never realized that. And that's, that's, that's what you're trying to avoid, so everybody looks at it and gets the exact same meaning out of it, so tabling it is a real smart move.
Yeah.
So it's coming back. Good. Alright.
Twenty-five ten?
Oh.
There's a shell in there.
There is.
Let me look.
Oh yeah, why, why is, why is, why are we taking this out, like, on, um?
Yeah, that is a funny question, yeah, I was, um, cause then it, it just, is it, well, the line above it, is that new or was that there with the stuff crossed off? Cause I feel like the line above it is what threw me, because.
Shouldn't be new.
It shouldn't be new, but if you take the red out, then it just, it doesn't make any sense.
No, and I, why, what, you know, could, what's the, perfect, cause I think we, we, we had that in there, or one of the reasons that it's there, I don't know if we put it there or if it was there before, was. Because there, there had to be guidelines on piloted stuff, and, and they do.
Yeah, and, and they do that all the time, yeah.
Right, and they come to the curriculum committee and, and we, and we review and.
Yep.
Um, so I'm not, I wasn't sure what's, what the intent was there, because we don't wanna change that.
Richard, isn't this, um, addressed in another policy as well?
That it references. Can you reference the policies?
This, again, that last paragraph that you're looking at is in, is all Seidberg language.
It is?
Okay, yes, so.
Then don't take it out.
It starts, well, I didn't take it out, it starts at, the superintendent is responsible for the selection and recommendation of textbooks for consideration.
Which is so broad.
Which is, you're assigning it to the superintendent and saying, he's responsible for coming up with the process.
Yep.
And making sure that that's done, and the question is, do you want to then go on and say, and by the way, you're responsible and be sure to do it this way?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what the crossed out language is, and generally that is frowned upon, um, because that's why you're hiring the superintendent and you're holding. Superintendent's feet to the fire to do it in a way, and if they have any questions, they're gonna ask you, it, just like he did on two policies, that, you know, wellness and.
Yeah, I think I'd rather keep it, especially since we've got a new superintendent.
And it's, and it's working.
It is.
I don't think we've seen that it's not working, when I think about the math and the history that's going through right now, even the French.
Do you remember Todd, why?
Yeah, I think I have to go through the guidelines, cause it's a superficial development issue of guidelines, let's go see what kinda guidelines are associated with this.
Cause that would be, it's very helpful to have that, the guidelines, because.
Yeah, I think the guidelines are there, I think.
Cause that'll help them when they come to you, it'll be, it'll be good to go, basically.
Twenty-five ten.
And I think the guidelines are there, it just, I think when we're looking at it, i- i- it, it seems wordy and the last sentence really just captured.
Oh, like redundant, we're already doing.
Yeah, so piloted textbooks used by students will be resented for review to the curriculum committee of the board, further being used in the classroom period.
It's right here in the administrative guidelines.
There's all, that's all the stuff that we would go through.
Cause it's already in the guidelines.
Yeah, it's right here, yeah.
Um, the steps, so it was that type of thing, so this felt.
If we take it out, could we reference that then?
It does, oh yeah, you can make a, a statement in that last sentence.
Make it, does. So it's like connects it to.
You can say C A G twenty-five ten.
C.
Which, but the, the only issue there is if the administration, cause it's not connected, so if we take it out of the, the policy. Then it becomes a, an administrative guideline that.
And not a policy.
Yeah, and it could be changed, amended, et cetera, or.
Oh, sure, 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 sure.
I think, I think we're just safe to keep it, especially if we're just removing it to be less wordy, I mean, if, if it's not. I mean, like, to your point, it's working and I think it, we, we probably spent some time putting this together a couple years ago. If it's our language, right?
Well.
Even if we keep it, I'd still reference the other guidelines.
Oh yeah, definitely, yeah.
Yeah.
You're talking about piloted and new, and I noticed that in the second paragraph, you're striking the word and new, so.
Right.
Is there a distinction, uh, Todd, that you were trying to get at, saying, you know, certainly piloted ones are a very different process than, than new ones? I'm just asking, that's what it appears, that's what it appears.
Cause new would have been piloted.
They would have been piloted, right, but I, I, I like the, I like it being the way it was, because then you, then you, there's no question about whether there's a difference in, um.
Yeah, piloted.
Yeah. I don't see any benefit in taking it all, I would doubt.
And then keep it in the guideline as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I like the idea of, um, referring, or, or, or is it easy for people to find the, the guideline, or they, they're numbered the same, right?
Yeah.
Oh. I, I think to keep it, I, I mean, I guess the, the and new to me is like, yeah, you could take that out because it would have already been piloted. So are we asking them to revisit new books that were already piloted?
I think you gotta keep them both, just so like there's, just so there's no, just in case something isn't piloted and it's just selected, I mean. Especially we got, you know, new.
Oh.
New, new, new people active, I just, I'm comfortable keeping it the way it was.
Well, and it may help to say, okay, we piloted, piloted this textbook, we're gonna, you know, it worked, da-da-da-da-da, and we're gonna implement it now, I mean. They've already reviewed it once, so it's not like they necessarily have to do a complete comprehensive review, but it's just kind of discuss that this is a new textbook that we're gonna be using.
Right, usually it come with, um, it's not just a textbook, it's a whole process or a whole, um. System that comes to the curriculum committee, and, and then it has textbooks as part of this, the whole, the whole learning strategy. And it's, um, something, yeah, we, we would, um, approve the, um, the pilot and then. You should pilot a couple of them, and then they select one, so it would have been approved as a pilot, but not as an official textbook. So I, I think, I like having the language the way it was.
It's interesting, cause it says, the superintendent shall develop administrative guidelines, there are plenty of policies that have guidelines that are not, you know, directly to develop.
Yeah, it did have.
It kinda gets weird that way, so it's like, if you, is, is every policy then direct the superintendent to.
Right.
A guideline, like, no, the guidelines are in place, so it gotta, it gets a little funky that way.
Yeah.
Um, so if we wanted to say, uh, Wisconsin, I, I mean.
May, but then.
Well, the guideline exists, so it's not even like.
That's, yeah, that, yeah. Right.
You can reference, I think, to your point, that in that last sentence, with something in there that references the guideline. Um, um, and therefore if the guideline changes, you. You'd still have to make sure the guideline is aligned with the policy, that's what we, that's what we do now, we tweak guidelines all the time.
Right, right. Yeah.
So who maintains them, is that different than develop to maintain the guidelines?
The administration is, sometimes guidelines are proposed by Neola and we adopt them as an administration, or. Um, we may develop our own, or we take Neola's suggestions and mix modifications.
I like the idea, you're saying, change the word develop to maintain, because they're already developed, and then we're okay.
Which, the superintendent you're saying?
Yeah.
Which is again, language you can put in every single policy.
Right.
Because there are policies that all have guidelines attached to it.
Yeah.
But this one says that, but this one says that the guideline, um. Must include effective consultation with professional staff members at all appropriate levels, and by the board, the description of the processes and reaching recommendation. There's a little bit, there, this, this is a little bit more, uh, specific.
It's prescriptive, just to.
Yeah, but it's, and it's saying that, that certain things that should be, that you as, may or may not include, must be included, and we don't know who, you know, what the. Superintendent's. Or you could just start with the sentence by saying, selection of piloted and new textbooks will include effective consultation, or shall include, or may include, whatever you want. Effective consultation, so that takes that out.
Or if you want just the guideline, you can say the, the administrative guidelines for selection of piloted and new textbooks, cause those were the professional staff, you know, you.
Oh, right.
You could just start there.
Reference it.
Take the superintendent shall develop.
Got it.
Yeah.
Or it's.
Yeah.
And then you're just going right.
Yeah, cause you're already in there as being responsible for the selection and revelation, yeah.
Of sort, yeah.
So start with, yeah.
So you're going to have to right-click and reject the change, and then, there you go. But you wanna, you don't want to take out the, leave the in there, just remove superintendent shall develop.
Guidelines, for guidelines.
Very much, especially if I shall include.
Shall include.
Not gonna, I guess.
Says, add any textbooks that, it's gonna say, shall include, shall include, I guess.
And what about this and new? So I think what I'm getting stuck on down there, I'm getting stuck though because it says used by students, and it's not saying used by students anywhere else, and I think that's why I'm getting tripped up in that last line.
That is just there.
Because we're not referencing, I understand it's being piloted with students, but I don't know, there's just like, there's something not, um.
We just take that out.
Parallel there.
How, how textbooks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will be presented.
Yes, thank you, that's, there we go, I'm like, get off that line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good. And then. Yeah, piloted and these textbooks, yes, perfect, good, now it's.
There we go, okay. Nice.
Excellent.
Alright.
Three thousands.
Let's start brewing the coffee.
See, this is, no, the rest of the stuff is easy, I think, it's a lot of redundancy.
Somebody made a comment about committees aren't effective for.
What? Come on, watch out. Are you dying that this is boring?
Not at all, I'm saying, we are, this is good, cause we're really getting thrown.
Yeah.
We always are, yeah.
Yeah, it's absolutely.
So thirty-one twenty-one is.
It's the same.
It's the same, right, yeah.
Yep.
I think we're gonna cruise now.
Thirty-one twenty-two.
That's the same as fourteen.
Yeah, drug-free workplace, and something there, cause we're.
I, I had something there, um.
I have a board.
I just questioned what's re- wait, reasonable suspension, sus- suspension testing, I just felt reasonable is a very open-ended word.
Yeah.
This is true, yeah.
So, the US Supreme Court invented that term.
Okay.
And it, when the police come after you, you know, want to search you, they have to have probable cause. When schools want to look at something within a school. There's a lower standard that the US Supreme Court to maintain safety in school and just say, I reasonably suspect that you have it because. And the court has ruled that, you know, what that looks like, and if you kinda strike out on the first one, you, you can't keep going. You've gotta keep double-checking that whoever, that there is reason that, um, you can move on to continue the search. Without getting into all the court cases, um, that would bring back, of course, you know, nightmares for Dave here from the law school. So that term is the US Supreme Court's official term, terminology, and all, all school and these.
I will not question the Supreme Court.
Yeah, all, all, but also.
It means whatever they say in music, it's a particular time they say.
Okay.
All, all schools, and what would happen is sometimes there are court, sometimes there are court cases and they're arguing, was that reasonable? So that's why administrators are always checking when there's something like, we gotta report, somebody has something in their locker, okay. Okay, in their locker, did they say where in the locker, because just, you can't go through someone's coat in a locker, or their backpack, that's, you know, unless you have. Yeah, they usually have it in their inside coat pocket, okay, now we can go and we can look there. So there's a whole series of steps you have to take to protect people's rights. So there's a whole series of steps you have to take to protect people's rights, their privacy rights, but also to protect the safety of the school, so schools get a special dispensation to maintain a safe environment, and this goes back decades.
Okay.
Decades, so that's where that term comes from. And when someone thinks schools have acted, acted unreasonably, or they went too far, they'll challenge that and say, what right did you have to go there? And the school has to provide evidence, or they're in trouble. So there's no free rein on that, you have to have reasonable suspicion.
Okay.
Based upon something other than, I didn't like the way you looked at me this morning. That'd be arbitrary and capricious.
Depends on the look.
She wouldn't give me a look like that, no.
That's a good catch though, I know, I slowed myself down on that, and I was like, ah.
The twenty-nine sixty is the same as fourteen sixty, right?
Yeah. I just had an issue with the placement of the last line, freedom for TV, I just felt like it should've been underneath the first paragraph.
Where?
Uh, thirty-one sixty.
My last sentence.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, just because it aligns with the first paragraph about additional testing. They need to have freedom for TV.
Oh, you, you should get the end of the policy.
Yeah.
Right there, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it like that?
It's a hundred for a reason, yeah.
Yeah, why is it moved?
Because it was a hundred and the policy, so.
Oh, 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 they never.
It was never conjoined, so it's through.
Because it's, because in the statute, as you read it.
Yeah.
It's, it's a separate item, uh, you know, it's either a one or a three or a B or something in there.
Oh, 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 yeah.
That they explain that, so they have it as a separate thing, it's not just part of a, part of a paragraph in the statute.
Right, yeah.
So that's why they separated it up.
I think it should still be separated, but it's underneath the first paragraph.
Oh, underneath the first paragraph, not part of the paragraph?
Yeah. Oh, no, I actually think it should be separated, underneath the first paragraph.
So here's.
Poor Brenna, she was being really efficient here.
I know.
So here's how, here's why I would recommend that you don't change it.
I don't care.
Underneath the physical examination part, keep it there.
I would, yeah.
Yeah, yes, and here's my recommendation, you can do whatever you like, here's my recommendation.
Oh, I can. Yeah.
If this is changed in the future.
Off the back down.
Yep.
When Brenda goes to look at it, or any, or, or she looks at it, it's gonna be out of order, and then it's gonna make things confusing to, to try and keep things,
Yeah, screw it. Oh, geez.
And then you might miss something and take something out accidentally.
And we have.
Sorry, Brenda, I, I don't wanna make your life more difficult, but it makes no sense right there.
So.
Yeah, I, I, I don't argue that, I'm just saying.
Let Neola make this, we're gonna make a suggestion in Neola, let them make the change.
I know, why, why would you do that?
Then we'll come back, then we'll come back next time and change, and then all the people say, why are you changing this now?
Change.
So, and we'll say, well, this is the Cedarburg.
That's right, it doesn't make any sense there, I was an English major, so.
Is it maybe because of the, how it's sequenced in the statute or something?
Yeah, that's why I was, that's why I was saying, it, it comes down to statute.
That's, yeah, yeah.
I was gonna, it does probably, exactly, okay, well, there, it's the legislature.
I'm gonna write, I'm gonna write a letter strongly worded on it.
If you think you can get the legislature to write, write clearly, good luck with that.
Not good.
Half the lawyers would be out of business if we had clear, clear statutes, right?
All right, did we have reasons already?
No, but I think that was pretty straightforward. Right, then agreed from the super to the board, probably.
I'd actually keep it from a real case.
Makes sense.
So forty-one twenty-one, we've already.
Yep.
Yep.
Go to the more place, um, and just look at that, and the greatest procedure. Fifty-one thirteen. Enrollment.
All the way to the end.
Oh, yeah, that C, B C.
This is just a minor change, right?
And then minor change to B C.
We know.
Did I miss something?
Yeah, it's under B C.
Oh, you missed a whole section, and then.
Who's another card?
Can you, can you go to the, uh, go to your other template, okay, you can go down there and do that. How did that happen?
I don't know. Fifty-one thirteen, there's more?
Fifty-one thirteen, and now scroll to the end.
Oh, beautiful.
There's a bunch in there.
Oh, what?
Okay. So what this, this is a piece in here, yeah, hers looks different because we just noticed that it was.
Where is that? I'm, I'm gonna have to put it in here.
It's not in there, she went to the template.
Oh, oh.
It got missed.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, gosh.
So, you know, the phone rang.
Oh, this is that part, this is the template, yes.
The phone rang and Brenda answered it and, and probably moved on before she was done with this. What this is about is that in policy, you are delegating to the superintendent, um, the idea of indicating
Oh.
of the whole process of who's admitted and, you know, the whole open enrollment process, so the board votes in January, how many space.
Not the volume, you mean like the actual.
How many spaces there are, and then you have to go by law, you know, about who gets in and who doesn't.
Yeah. Yeah.
The superintendent can certainly inform you of numbers, they can tell you what districts, they could even tell you what names, but it's not an action item for you to go thumbs up, thumbs down, because legally, you have to follow the law, you have to accept it. So this is indicating that you are delegating all of that expressly to the superintendent to do, and once again, Dave, because the statute is written in kind of a confusing way that might lead someone to think that you have to vote on it when you actually don't.
Oh.
And the state's guide, uh, regulations on it says, no, because you cannot vote no on something that's illegally, following the legal process.
Right.
So, it's one of those things where every, it was, everybody understood it and then people questioned, there was a mismatch.
Yeah, and we're not, we're doing it that way.
You're doing it that way, and so are most districts.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing that I would, I would just say superintendent instead of.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, then didn't solve that, didn't I?
Yeah, you have it in there, and somehow it all lived out.
I wonder if it's the new.
Well, it could be.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with us, that was the board docs thing.
Whoever was getting out of order is the section. They changed the way the board docs works.
The editing tools.
Oh.
So when you copy paste, it's a little different than what it was.
Oh.
And it's actually, once you get used to it, it's easier, but you have to unlearn how you did it, you have to wait and relearn, and you don't reset that often.
Yeah.
I use it every day, poor Brenda uses it a couple times a year.
Yeah.
And I've been using it since we all.
So we're keeping this option, yes.
Just changing the secret administrator to superintendent. Delegating to superintendent, and then again, in the paragraph, yeah. You have that, actually.
So in the title and then in the first one, you have.
Yeah.
Or just a substitute, the finding replace. You'd like to explain yourself.
It's like parallel parking though, where like watching you do it.
Yeah. My wife would tell you, she, she's proof you can get through life without ever parallel parking after you get your driver's license.
Really? You've never been to City Park?
She makes me drive.
I used to park people's cars for them as a passenger.
Yeah.
Very proud of those skills.
She'll go around the block and park me in the parking lots.
So then we're good with this one, then?
Uh, the B C, we're good with the required length of K through twelve attendance opportunities.
You have some of those.
I didn't understand that, that they removed the required, this.
They took out the required length of K through twelve attendance opportunities, I didn't understand that bit.
Yeah, I didn't either, that's.
Which one are we on?
It, it was the other, the little, that, the red, yeah. I didn't, I didn't understand that at all.
Yeah, there was confusion about that language, it really was kind of copybook, and so they, they took it out.
Yeah. It seems fine to be on, but yeah, I didn't understand what to deal with, so.
We can sharpen it up, let's do it, right?
Well, plus it doesn't make any.
It doesn't make any sense, yeah. Is it it? Oh, election, the official, oh, that was X one, so fifty-two hundred.
That's five, why are we?
It's terrible, son.
Where is this?
Hey, if you look, scroll down a little bit, I'm, I'm asking a question, but I'm just seeing it now, under C, you have a parent guardian.
Wow.
And you said.
Impressive.
Chum. Attend funeral of a relative, it's changed to attend a funeral.
You need to exactly.
Of a relative.
The funds.
It could be your neighbor.
Yeah.
It could be someone else.
I hope they're taking that out.
As long as it's in here, I think you probably wanna give that more.
Oh, yeah.
Of an option, so it just says to attend a, a funeral, instead of funeral of a relative. What's right there, stop.
To attend a funeral of a relative?
Go down a little bit, go down a little bit, and C, right there, C.
Oh.
With revision of a parent guardian.
So take out of a relative.
Oh.
Again, it could be a neighbor.
Yeah.
Yep.
It has.
Anything else on that?
There are people who worry about me that I see things like that.
That's good.
Actually, I'd just say print one for us, man.
Fifty-four ten?
Yes, what's going on here, why are we doing all this?
Well, my question before we get into it, so we talked about promotion from like eighth grade to ninth grade, but then we have promotion from fourth to fifth, why wouldn't we have fifty-six? Just cause that's where.
That's state.
That's the stage, okay, okay.
I'm assuming this is all.
Yep.
Graduate stuff, yeah.
Yes.
It's actually clearer, and, and it aligns more with our practice than the prior.
Oh.
Do you remember twenty years ago when they were talking about putting in a high school graduation test? And again, that's when parents from this community and white fish bait in other surrounding communities said, this doesn't make sense. This law goes back that, that far.
And what?
It's kind of one of those re- state requirements that's long since been forgotten, but it's still a requirement.
All right.
Okay, and then we have this new one, huh?
So there were three checkpoints, one in elementary school, one in middle school, and then high school, they had a diploma, was the original, and then the high school one got defeated,
Oh.
so they left the other two in place.
Oh. Is that Wisconsin? Or.
Wisconsin.
Dallas.
New children, that's, you're not good at high school, this, uh, I'm gonna see, this is a brand new one, I'm assuming it's, uh, based on a statute.
Yeah, mhm.
That follows P I, what, I heard it's a P I thirty-four or forty-three.
No, down at the bottom, there's, it will tell you what it is fifteen.
Fifteen, I knew, oh, it was awful, it was awful.
Oh.
Anything concerning the narrative?
No.
I just had one question, just again, I know, so it talked about like, I mean, do parents ever have to sign off on this plan or anything?
No, they're part of the generation, but it's not like a, it's more of, this is how, like, we do for all our students with like response intervention, this is just the high school version of that. And usually it involve, can involve some sort of alternative education, that's where you need more of an informed, um, consent to make that kind of change of, like, we use our, Wasaki County High School for students that are credit deficient, and their parents are part of that placement.
So are parents aware that the child might be getting an intervention, for example, the parent is aware of it?
They are aware, there is a plan, yes.
So it's documented somewhere that the parent is at least aware.
There is, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's just what I wanted to tell them.
Yeah, so there, when they, when we do any type of intervention, specifically that one, there's a plan that's, an intake meeting, a plan is generated, the plan is updated, it's shared with the school and family.
Okay.
But this is a state requirement as opposed to the, the, an I E P for special education student, which is a federal requirement.
Any questions on sixty-one oh eight? There you go. Sixty-one fourteen.
This is strictly federal requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're gonna use federal money, you have to go by the federal rules.
Yeah.
And it, it's just the, yeah, the county principles, right?
Yeah.
Sixty-one forty-six. Don't change it.
No, it's way over the top.
I don't feel so to do anything on sixty-one forty-six.
So once again, if you're going to have a.
Yeah.
If you're going to issue bonds because you're going to do a referendum and you're gonna have a building, there are legal, there are financial requirements, and this is the updated version of that. And essentially, you have to have a policy that says, A, we're gonna spend the money on what we actually say we're gonna spend the money on.
Oh, sure.
You're gonna, you're gonna buy bonds, we're actually gonna do what we say, and B, we're gonna actually pay you back.
Yeah.
So this is the board's commitment, and you have to have this in order to actually go out and sell bonds.
Okay.
Well, you have to have the board's approval too, but then, that comes first.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Sixty-one fifty-two.
I didn't have anything here either.
Oh, we did have something. It's gonna get to two, um, the first paragraph, we're referencing D P I guidance. And I'm always leery about, um, including stuff that we don't have control over, we never know what it might say, is that something we need to keep in there?
As Ben, if Ben were here, he'd tell you, 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 you're required to, the final say in what you're gonna do with school fees is, is D P I, you know, they don't have the final say in what you individually are gonna do, but they provide guidance on what's allowable and what's, what's prohibited. That's what this means, if you wanna say, I don't like the idea of putting in a specific website.
Yeah.
That's fine, take that out, but you are reliant upon, when you're going to talk about waiving fees and, and school fees, there's your local policy, but those policies have to align with what D P I allows and prohibits, and that's kind of a pretty wide spectrum, but you still need to check it, because there are some districts that are, um, being naughty.
Okay.
I'm sure it's not you.
It's a safeguard to actually have it in, in the reference, I would think, cause, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so you wanna reference it, but I, I don't think you wanna link to it, right?
Oh, sure, take out the link, and just say D P I guidance.
You can take out the link, but the, the D P I guides is a hot link itself.
Yeah, it's, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can take it.
There you go.
Guidance.
Let me just.
Yeah. It was almost like an advertisement in there.
Well, they were just trying to indicate that your policy does not have the final word.
Sure. Yeah.
The D P I guidance is, your policy has to be aligned.
Is it guidance or is it a requirement?
Well, it's, it's guidance because there's a broad spectrum, Dave, it's not a, an individual requirement, it's like you,
They're different, right?
It's gonna be done in.
Okay, so, so we, we referenced the guidance, we're good, okay.
As a new policy, yeah.
So this is something you've been doing, you have a waiver of school fees practice, but you actually never had a policy. And you should have a policy, and part of it is because there are some federal requirements, such as if a student qualifies for free lunch or is homeless, they must have their fees. Beyond that, you can do whatever you as a community want to do. And then there has to be, and if you deny somebody, there has to be some way to appeal that so that one person is not king, right?
I think I'm at.
Nope.
No. Another new policy.
Yeah, what's going on with this?
I had a question on that one, I just had, so it talked about, it used the word periodically thereafter, it's like once you came up with a plan, and I just thought periodically was very open-ended again.
Yeah, in the first paragraph?
Yeah, the last one is the word.
Yeah, and the advice that plan periodically thereafter.
Is this a requirement, Richard?
No, no, this is, this is a, there's no requirement that you have to have this policy.
Yeah, that's, that's my question was, yeah, why, why are we, why are we adding a policy?
It seems like something we're already doing, but.
I suppose it's something we're already doing, why would we not, I mean, it makes some sense then, wouldn't it?
I think it makes sense.
Cause we might, yeah, we, we, we're not gonna be here forever, right?
Yeah, and then we may wanna change it from the board to the district, however, it talks about a plan, obviously we have a, our district plan, but do we have a capital expenditures plan? Like an individual capital plan?
Many districts have a kind of a replacement plan, I don't know.
I've got, you know, the five, ten, fifteen.
That we are, that would be this plan, that we're referencing then.
Then other districts do something and every year they drop a year, that year off and they have another year on.
Yeah.
So then they, instead of periodic, periodically, to your point, they might put annually. In your, in, but periodically is a more forgiving term.
We do do it annually, so we could put annually in that.
No, there you go.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Is it part of?
More specific.
Is it, is it part of your, um, your, um, annual meeting booklet? Some districts actually do that.
No, no. As we, as we, as we approach the, um, the sunset on, um, the limitations on spending Fund forty six, so Dave, we're just about ready to open that up, um, and I think having a policy that we can aligns it annually, we're reviewing this and that can help us drive how we're gonna access or use.
Yep.
Yeah, Fund forty six.
Yeah, cause then we're not dependent on the one individual who is doing a really good job of managing things and.
Yep, exactly.
So if you wanna change it to annually, you can.
And do we want it to say the board here?
Um.
Like, usually I, we say district, but I feel like it should say board.
Yeah.
Well, further down, you might wanna say the district will prepare capital expenditures plan.
Yes, yep, correct.
Right above the word thereafter. And I think that's really what you're thinking about.
Yep, the district will prepare the plan.
Take the board out.
Yep, and then. The board shall not, shall consider not only the number of children, but also the school requirements, the board may engage the services of the firm. Yeah.
We have to say anything about it being approved by the board if we're, if we're saying, and this policy says the board will prepare, if we're saying the district will.
Oh.
But says you're gonna, oh, okay.
The district will prepare and revise.
Are you, is the board approving the plan annually? Now?
No.
Usually not, no.
Yeah.
Only when you're actually gonna spend the money.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because we're like, um, we're approving any kind of deposit in the Fund forty six as part of the budget.
Yep.
And then we're approving the actual expense.
Yep.
Part of, yeah, so it'll be, um, indirectly, we're putting pieces of it.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, cause it goes to B and G and then he guys look at it, yeah, that comes in full board. Okay.
Corporations, public records.
All the way down to the bottom, it's just a. So, Dave, you would appreciate this, uh, what this is all about is getting rid of the word ensure, which is a legally hazardous word.
Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, right, yeah, that makes sense.
That makes sense, right, because it, it's, it's impossible.
Yep.
And it holds you to an impossible standard, so.
And here's where we do wanna have the link to the, um, cause this is our actual policy. The, 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 um, the test, uh, record retention. Do we have someone though that, um, that's keeping an eye on that to watch changes and make sure we're complying with changes? Like if they, if D P I does change the record retention, obviously.
We get an update, early old, and, um.
The state sends us an update.
Well, okay, cool.
Yep.
Wisconsin's.
Well, the link is for revised June twenty fifteen, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's the last one.
That's the last one.
That's the last one, okay.
Thirty four fifty.
Control, uh, oh.
Oh, yeah, this is, this one. Oh, yeah, so the first one's like. We've got a report to the.
Shell contact.
A shell, is that, what, what's the purpose for that?
If you have a measles outbreak.
Mm-hmm.
You're required to tell your local health department, we have a measles outbreak.
Yep. Yep.
What we took out of this is that you are required to follow the Department of Health Services protocols.
Okay.
Because you're not.
Right, okay.
Um.
So this is just the answers, the short answer is that it's required.
Required, yeah.
Okay, things like that will require it.
Yep.
Okay.
And remember, it, it says that the health department is recommending to you what to do. And as replacing that you must follow what the Department of Health Services tells you to do.
Good with that one?
It provides the most flexible.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and like district created protocols.
Um, oh, yeah, the other, one thing I did have a question on those, um, for those shall be developed, with consideration for the following resources, I'm not sure exactly what that means, but then, um, guidance provided by, um, medical and our public health officials, that, okay. CDC, do we wanna specif- specifically list all these, I mean, CDC, obviously.
Put an or in there?
Made some mistakes during the last issue. The DHS said the same. State of Wisconsin the same, the American Pediatrics Association, I mean, I saw some just scienceless, um, political pieces that they were putting out. Local health department officials and local medical professionals, I'm not sure what that means, we had some people that came to our meetings during the last issue and identified as medical professionals and said purely emotional things. Parents, I don't know, so I, I know this is with consideration, but.
And that's why they tried to word it that way, that you are listening to everybody, you are seeking information, but you're gonna make a decision in the end, so it's trying to be very open and say, we're gonna be open and transparent, we'll, we'll, we'll listen to people and then we'll do what we believe is best, best interest for our kids.
Then let's, can we on B then just say guidance provided by medical and our public health officials?
Sure.
Instead of specifically listing some that may or may not provide good information, you never know.
No problem.
Yeah, cause I think that's true, we do wanna evaluate.
Well, right.
All this stuff plus additional.
And you wanna put it in policy that we're gonna give everybody a chance to hear from everybody.
Look at it.
Right.
Absolutely.
Should you put like entities in there or is officials broad enough for like organizations?
I think that's.
Well, then do you need C if you're just saying medical and our public health officials?
Yeah, cause. C is focused on local.
Yeah, I like the local aspect of, um.
Cause we, I agree.
Although, it's a local health department officials, I guess, yeah, you consider what they say, sure, we did.
Maybe the one before, what you wanna say is state and federal. Guidance provided by state and federal medical and public health officials, which would differentiate the fact that your, local, right here, has a much better grip on things oftentimes.
Right, from local. Yeah, cause that's what they're trying to say, those examples.
Yeah, I think that's, that makes sense, yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
And they need to catch all, cause you never know what the circumstance is gonna be.
Should that, should be an or at the end of D? Yep. Cause it does say with consideration for the following, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, or, blah, blah, blah.
You don't have an and or, and or, or or.
Oh, and or.
And or.
And or.
You never pass up an and or.
No, so many options.
I can spend a later kids too, those.
I know. Eight thirty was my target, we're gonna make it.
We got one more.
Alright, ninety one thirty.
You're gonna get stitches out of the mouth.
Let's just.
Uh, which one I read, which one I read?
Oh, yeah, ninety one thirty.
So this is, this is just cleanup based on the recent, um, when we're looking at instructional material challenge and some of the, um, confusion on us whether that, um, meeting that Alan held was an actually open meeting.
Yep.
And this now, um, I think was the intent of the policy along was to have that decision rest with, um, Alan.
Okay, so.
And if, and if it is a required, um, text or required reading, that would automatically come back to the curriculum committee
Yeah.
for consideration after he comes to a decision. Um, but this stops it from getting, coming to a, a committee or establishing a committee.
This last language is part of a choice you did not choose, part of an option sequence that you did not choose for this policy and somehow it.
Never got it.
It did get crossed out when it should have been crossed out.
Oh.
And it just muddled, it muddled the issue.
Okay, so then, so then it's up to the director of, of the curriculum and instruction to determine whether it's up closed for a poll or.
Uh, no, he actually ultimately has, develops a process which he has, which is coming to the curriculum committee and the board.
Yep.
Okay.
And it's that process that he will use and make the decision.
Oh, I got it, okay. And this, this is just giving flexibility by taking, okay, I got you, yeah, alright.
This D, when it got to like a member of the committee, it started.
It's like, what committee?
What committee, and it led us to, okay, now we have to establish a committee, then it's, they're open meetings, all that type of thing, and so it drew our attention to this policy, like this doesn't read right into pictures twenty, it was something that should not have been in there, so it just.
Yeah, because when that, that particular situation we had, I, I think it was a question about a specific, um, resource and that resource came in front of it, to the curriculum committee and, you know, that's where, you know, people were able to, to come and look and see what's, it's a, it's kind of the bigger picture stuff. And then, and then we had the board meeting that approved it, right? So, that would be the public exposure.
Correct.
That would, we're not losing that.
No.
This is what, there's a specific issue, that if, if he comes up with a, a process that.
He did have.
Yeah, okay.
And that would be shared, uh, and it will be, and I think we're gonna, um, push that into the A G. So the guideline will be there and he could, and he'll show you.
Oh, that we're reflected, yeah, that's good. That's it, right?
That's it?
So fifty seven twenty two and eighty five ten are tabled.
Sure, there's three. Eighty five ten, fifty seven twenty two and twenty four.
Forty fourteen.
Human growth.
Oh.
So we're tabling twenty four.
Twenty four fourteen.
Fifty seven twenty two.
Alright, anything else, anyone?
I know, that one, I just. The eyes. Sorry, I was showing a picture of my baby.
I was wondering if you wanted to make a motion.
I would, I'm so moved.
What, what are you moving?
To adjourn.
We have to move it.
Oh, oh, my bad. I jumped the gun.
What do we have to do?
Baby, um, I'd like to move all policies minus. Those three stated. To the full board for approval.
Alright, you have a motion in the second. Call those in favor, aye, any opposed? Alright, that motion carries three zero.
We can move to adjourn, eight fourteen.
Got a motion to adjourn. And a second. Call them in favor, aye, opposed, yeah, motion passed unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
How was your surgery, by the way? You're here.
I'm here.
You're doing great.